Does Miranda want these back?
No, those are.
We can mark on.
Yeah, those are yours to keep. We're just going to collect the scoring and the interview questions.
Make sure I'm sure.
Heidi, are they aware of the salary we're looking for? I don't think so, because we hadn't really talked about that.
Okay, I'm just wondering, so.
I don't know that we've had.
No, I don't want to talk about, I'm just saying if there was a range.
For you.
Okay.
That would be my guess.
Is there any questions?
So your first firm is ready. Are there any questions you would like to?
Any references been checked yet?
Not yet, no. Once you decide where we are, we can do that this week. Our timeframe that we had laid out was to conduct the interviews at the first part of this week with a, hopefully, recommendations in the middle of the week with a contract to be able to be executed by the end of the week. So we're working on a tight timeframe, but we think we can manage that depending on how today goes. Are we ready to get started with? Okay. All right, good morning. We think that we have our first firm, which is Gov HR, joining us by Zoom. Gentlemen, are you able to hear us?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Rick Genex, yes. I don't believe my partner, Lane Bailey, is on yet.
Okay, well, we still have a couple of minutes. I think we had told you 8:45, so we are running a little ahead.
Correct.
Okay.
Not a problem.
All right, well, Chris, will you let me know when the next person, there's two of them joining us?
Is this Miranda?
This is Heidi. I'm Heidi York. I am the current county manager, and I'm going to help facilitate your process this morning.
Hi, how you doing?
Good morning.
Pleasure meeting you.
Thank you. Not yet, okay. The challenge of a virtual Zoom. Some days' success looks different than others'. On the backside of these packets, so you have the second proposal here, and then you have our RFP in there as well to reference, as well as the original scoring that was done. So we have one of the two joining us from Gov HR so far. We're waiting on Lane Bailey.
Okay.
Before we get started, is there any way we can broaden the screen out?
I think once we get started, it'll become full screen. IT is saying yes. I think we're just waiting.
Thank you.
This is you, checking some things.
It would be in alignment with the morning if that was.
Surely. PJ, that was PJ. Well, this is, I got Charlie Palmer. He's got PJ and I don't know what PJ.
Mine says PJ in it. Scoring does.
No, it's the executive search.
Oh, the executive.
Recommendation.
Yeah, mine says PJ.
That's the interview questions.
Oh, that. Let me look at this piece. This is the first one.
That's on the pages. Can you change that thing?
You did Kyle.
Second.
I'm still checking, making sure that you're.
I didn't hear.
Kyle may have mine.
PJ has PJ's. All right. And then do you have yours?
It's the second.
First one is what we're looking for.
Have that one in mind. I mean.
Oh, here it is.
Okay.
Anyway, I'll need to make sure we're all on the same page.
We have a recommendation for each. We have a recommendation only at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Just want to make sure, I'm like, okay, I only got one.
The second.
It is the second.
Yeah.
I'm busy.
I got you right, right?
I think so. I think I am.
Good catch, Derek. Mindy, can you make sure that they have the right paper in front of them?
Mm-hmm. You guys are working on the Gov HR, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I have 8:45, so do you want to get started?
Yeah.
All right, Rick, I'm checking back in with you to make sure that you can still hear us. We have 8:45. Good morning.
Yes, good morning. How you doing?
Good.
Pleasure meeting everybody. I know Lane is going to join. He, I know he's having some family issues, and I spoke to him yesterday with his mom. But we talked, and I know he is going to join. So it's a pleasure meeting you all this morning. I guess I can start and.
If you could just give me a second, Rick. I'll just let you know kind of what we're anticipating this morning.
Sure.
For the process. So we are hoping for about 10 to 15 minutes of a presentation from Gov HR, and then we have about 10 questions that the commissioners will be asking of you all, and then we'll leave a few seconds at the end, a few minutes at the end for any last minute or follow-up questions that the board may have. Would you like them to introduce themselves so you know who you're speaking with this morning?
Sure, that would be great. And Lane is joining up.
Okay, good morning, Lane. You're there.
Good morning.
Good morning. We are just getting started. I'm Heidi York. I'm the current county manager. I'm just going to be facilitating this process this morning. I'm not evaluating or engaged in assessing at all, and I'll turn it over to our chairman to introduce himself, and then we'll just go quickly around the room so you all know who you're talking with this morning.
Good morning. My name's Gordon Powell, board chair, and welcome you guys to be interviewed this morning. Look forward to hearing from you and joining in our potential search with you guys. Thank you.
My name is Derek Sims, vice chair of the board, and again, good to meet you.
Good morning, Charlotte Palmer, commissioner. Thank you, guys, for reaching out to us to try to help us find us a new HR, I mean, county manager.
Good morning. I'm PJ Gentry, commissioner, and thank you for being with us this morning.
Good morning. My name's Kyle Perrier, commissioner. Thank you for being here.
And Rick and Lane, would you like to tell us where you are joining us from?
Lane, you want to start? Yes, Lane Bailey. I recently retired December 31st to city manager Salisbury, and I'm joining from Salisbury, North Carolina.
Thanks, Lane.
And Rick Genex, recently retired, and I'm actually here in our town home in Charlotte, which we split between here and Illinois.
Great. So if you'd like to begin, we'll allocate about 10 to 15 minutes for an overview presentation of the services that you'd be able to provide to the Board of Commissioners.
Sure. I'm going to share the screen, my screen, so we want to start the presentation.
Thank you, Rick. I'll get started for us. Gov HR is a certified Bormanoff company started in 2009. We have 20 full-time employees, six part-time employees. I'm one of those. Also work with the North Carolina Association of Regional Councils of Government. We work exclusively with local governments. Fund is based out of Illinois, but we have offices in 13 states. Our philosophy, next, Rick, we're based on service and very proud of the integrity of our fund. We encourage you to talk to the previous clients that we've worked with. Trust is the core of our business, and we want to treat you all with respect and help you make the best decisions you can. A little bit about, I'm Ricky myself. I just started with the firm. I've had 32 years of local government experience, 21 years as a city manager, seven years as a county manager. I was county manager in Polk County. My mom is actually with me now. She used to live in Caswell County. I lost my father about a month ago, and my mom's staying with me now, so I was talking with Rick, said the way I go to Rockford is to be from Blanche, North Carolina, so I'll have to adjust my travel plans if we're fortunate enough to get this job, but very proud to be part of the Gov HR team. Rick, can you mention your experience a bit?
Sure. As a show that I have about 40, 40 years of experience in Illinois local government, but very familiar with the state of North Carolina. My wife's family is in the Charlotte area for the last 35 years. We have, her sister lives in Raleigh for some time also, and so we're down here many times a year over those last 35 years, and actually, my wife has been worked in the furniture industry for about 30 years for Closet Furniture and spent many, many weeks in the spring and fall furniture markets in High Point and Ashboro, the company headquarters. And as I said, I just started renting a town home here in Charlotte area near family and been very familiar, made many trips throughout the state, and had the opportunity some time ago to go to the Bell Leadership Program in Raleigh. Love the state and look to make it our permanent home soon.
Thank you, Rick. Gov HR has a tremendous amount of experience. We have consultants across the country and got certainly two here in North Carolina. One of the co-owners of the company also is the former deputy county manager for Catawba County. So, and again, formed in 2009. We've done over 1,000 searches in 41 states. We've also done quite a bit in the southeast, from Georgia to Virginia, some in Asheville and Fayetteville, and we encourage you to reach out to any of those clients who have got quite a bit of experience working in the region. The reason I got into local government is my best friend in college is brother Neil Emery. He was, Jeff was retired city manager, but I've known Neil to the County Commissioner's Association for 30-plus years, so great knowledge of the candidate pool that you would have within the state. Our firm is committed to diversity. We want to try to bring a diverse candidate pool, and the applicants that we send forward will reflect that. We have a lot of different groups that we reach out to and work with to try to increase our pool of candidates from emerging local government leaders, women in government, and we utilize a strong social media presence to push out candidates other than traditional advertising that we would work with as well, and we have a personal touch in our outreach as well. Some of the examples have really increased diversity in the profession, from Texas to Virginia, Georgia, really across the country, and very proud of our work in that area there. This is something I'm very proud of. Forty percent of our clients have conducted more than one recruitment of Gov HR, so that tells you that they are happy with the services they've provided. They had us do a second search there, and I think our consultants like Rick and I, we bring a unique combination of experience in the recruitment world, but also practical experience as managers, key department heads in local government, and we understand what it's like to be a manager and understand the needs of the communities. We also have a good track record of attracting candidates that remain in the position of 286 placements. We tracked 89% of those were still in those positions, and of the 11% that left those positions, their average tenure was three and a half years. So that tells you that we help you recruit a manager that will stick around a while, and that's one of the most important decisions that you make. Now I'd like to have Rick just talk about the process that we'll go through, this tailored your needs.
Thank you, Lane. Before I start, I preface my comments with the fact that before coming to work for Gov HR, I used Gov HR several times for recruitments throughout my career, and actually, my last position with village manager in Hope, Illinois, was obtained through Gov HR recruitment, full village manager. So I wanted to come with them because of the professionalism, incredible outreach that they do have. So let's talk about our process. We tailor it to meet your needs. We know that understanding the challenges and opportunities to organization and the culture and the expectations critical to your success. We hold key stakeholder interviews with community engagement, use any type of groups that you want. Not only will we speak to the board members, but any other individuals or groups you feel are the key stakeholders that we need to reach out to. Just as an example, last week for another recruitment, I facilitated two evenings with a community panel for village manager search, and then their spokesperson and I met with their village board to share the information that they garnered from the community panel. We'll develop a position announcement improvement brochure. It's really a detailed recruiting tool, as we'll have to email and post it on our website. We'll place position announcements on social media and a professional website, including the ICMA. At every step of that development, that group share and ad placement, your approval is sought prior to anything being advertised publicly. We want to make sure the search is tailored to what you want to put out there. We'll perform a candidate outreach in recruitment. We'll outreach potential candidates. We use vast email, telephone calls. Some of us may know individuals that would fit this position. We'll reach out to them. We rely heavily on our social media, and as you see, we have over 500 email database individuals, and utilize our LinkedIn software. We'll provide you a list of where we're going to place our ads also, to see the vast network that we can reach. Not only will we reach out to municipal organizations in North Carolina, but also those municipal organizations in the surrounding states. Besides ICMA, we post on LinkedIn.com, GovernmentJobs.com, Strategic Government Resources, the Local Government Hispanic Network, National Forum for Black Public Administrators, the League of Women in Government, HotJobs.Vet, and VeteranJobListings.com. Municipal leaders and members are very familiar with us. When you look at how many visits to our website we have each month, we have over 7,000 subscribers to our emails, and this recruitment is going to be individually posted on our social media, including Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, and we subscribe to the database, email address for over 9,500 city managers, and we have over 20,000 LinkedIn contacts. We provide complete process coordination. We acknowledge receipt of all the information from the candidate applications and submitted materials, and then Lane and I will do an initial screening review of all candidates to make sure their credentials match what is in the recruitment brochure. All this information is stored in our JS software, and it's available for Lane, myself, and our recruitment coordinators to review and use for our interview and screening. Then we'll begin our due diligence for the process. We'll conduct live interviews with prospective candidates, conduct preliminary background search inquiries, reference call, do internet searches, social media, printing news stories, Twitter postings, Instagram postings, Facebook postings, and if possible, a one-way recorded video is there available as an optional service, and then we'll prepare and present a report and identify a semi-finalist for consideration. Now, that reporting is going to take place after all the screening interviews and the preliminary Google searches are completed. We'll also provide you a list of a timeline, when this process is going to start, as well as when it's going to finish, and every step we'll stay on track with that also. We'll prepare a book for you containing all the candidates. We recommend to include their cover letter, the resumes, brochure information, and any further information they had during their supplemental. And then I'll work with, we'll work with you to facilitate the selection of the final candidates. We'll arrange for additional background inquiries prior to the interview. We'll, that's when we'll start the detail, criminal background checks, credit checks, vehicle checks, and verified education, and then we'll prepare the questions for you for review and editing of those interviews, help facilitate those final interviews and selection, ensuring the client has all the information needed so you make an informed decision, and if you would like, we'll aid in negotiation, any contract with the prospective new manager. As I said, we'll prepare both first and second round, interview questions for the board, and if there are any specific panels that the board wants to utilize, we will also put together questions for them. So our path to success has to be collaborative. We're going to have a great partnership with Gov HR, Person County. We know, we're known for our process, our approach, network, and record of our guarantee. We're known for our commitment to diversity. We're known for our commitment to communication, and we're known for our commitment to professional local government. We're committed to always being in contact with you, whether it's via phone, email, Zoom call, maintaining regular contact with any liaison, whether that is a parada, providing regular updates and follow-up with the candidates. Not only is Gov HR a great recruiting organization, but we are committed to professional local government. We provide counseling services, invited, requested, no charge. We do interview advice, resume review, and we have managers in transition that we also work for. We'll work and do mock session. work and do mock session interviews and resume reviews at state association conferences at no charge. And we really do a lot of presentations at our national and state conferences on a variety of topics. And we work to promote women and unrepresented groups in the profession. So I'll turn it back to Lane so we can finalize the presentation.
We have a couple guarantees. We stay with you until we pick the ideal candidate. And we'll do an additional search if necessary. If we can't find the right candidate, we offer a one-year guarantee once you place the candidate. And if that doesn't work out, which rarely happens, we'll do the search over again, and the only cost would be travel time there. I think this is probably the most important decision that you all will make as a board, and we're committed to help you make the best decision that you possibly can. We have a depth of experience throughout the United States. We have an extensive outreach program, 14,000 website visits each month. We have a strong knowledge of the industry and a wonderful reputation. Ninety-four percent of our clients, local governments, have rated us as outstanding and would recommend us for future recruitments. And Rick and I would be delighted to help you in your search and be happy to answer any questions you may have for us. Now, we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this morning.
Thank you. The board has 10 questions that they will ask of you, and they're just going to go around in a round robin fashion. So Chairman, if you want to lead that process?
We all, and good morning again. I'll start with those question one, and we just go around, and then we'll go around again. First question would be, what are your firm's specialty areas, and how will that make you a successful partner for our executive search process?
Let me, I think nationwide, we're tops in our industry in terms of recruitment in local government, and we have a nationwide reputation. But we also have strong North Carolina ties. I've worked in North Carolina for 32 years, most of that time as a city, 28 years as city and county manager. And I know a lot of talent in North Carolina and the southeast. Rick brings a depth of experience as well, and I think the nationwide reputation of our firm and the North Carolina regional ties that we have make us uniquely qualified to assist you all.
Sure. And if I may add to that, we also do assessment centers, classification, compensation studies, we do goal-setting programs, grant writing, we do child description facilitation, we put together evaluation systems for organization, and do staff analysis also.
Thank you, Ms. Sam.
How many searches will our consultant be working on at a time?
Right now, I don't have a search going on at this time. So this would be the only one that I would have going on right now.
Yeah, right now, I will just be finishing a few of them, and this, I may have, this will be the major search, and then I just have an outreach that I'm just working on. So we'll devote our time and effort to this search.
Thank you.
What would you say defines a successful search?
I think longevity in a position, and if the year, two years from now, the commission is happy with a candidate, and the candidate is comfortable in the community, I think that's a success.
Could you please describe your search and candidate screening process again, please?
You want to hit that, Rick?
Sure. What will happen is, once, we put together a detailed brochure that is, we asked for some pictures, all their information. That will be, we work with our recruitment coordinators to put an integral brochure together, and we put that out. But we'll also put an ad together, which is more compressed and sent out also. So once that goes out, we put, usually, it's a three- to four-week period for candidates to respond in similar resumes, cover letters, and references. Once they do that, they're put into our software program, and then Lane and I review them to see if their criteria meets the needs. And then we rank them, and then usually interview anywhere between 10 to 14 candidates that we feel are the ones that may fit the your desires. Then after that, once we do that, we'll rate them as a Tier One or a Tier Two candidate, and put them all in a book that we'll send to you electronically when we meet to discuss the candidates in our presentation. And we'll go through what we felt were the important, strong points of that candidate, and some of the weak points, and why we felt you should look at this individual. And then we'll also discuss on what the references have to say. And from there, the commission will decide on what candidates they want to interview, and then we'll facilitate the questions, reach out to those candidates, bring them in for whatever interviews you want to do, whether I'm doing a search right now, where we're doing not only interviews, written exercise, and then we're doing a tour of specific facilities. So we'll tailor the search to however you want to.
Sorry, I was still writing.
Okay, sorry.
That's fine. I hope I got what you, I hope I answered that question.
You did. What deliverables and communications can we expect from your firm through this process?
I can get them. So the deliverables, as I said, communication will be whoever your candidate is, whether it's a member of the board, or whether it's a member of staff, we will be in constant communication, whether it's letting you know, getting specific dates from the board as to when we're going to have interviews, making sure you are satisfied with the brochure that's going on, making sure that it gets out, and then stay on that timeline that we will prepare for you to get this process moving and get to an endpoint where you can select a candidate. And then, once you see the detailed electronic submittable book, it could be, depends on the candidate, it could be 130-plus pages long with all their detailed information, cover letters, brochure, and they're all placed ethically, so there's no specific ranking. But that ranking will come later on through our discussion.
All right, sir. Next question. How would former clients and candidates describe your approach?
As I mentioned before, we have a 94% rating of outstanding. Forty percent of our clients have used us for more than one search. And I think based on that, we would have a very, very strong rate.
Agreed. As I stated, I use them three different organizations for searches, for public works directors, a number of them, finance directors, a number of them, human resource directors. And as I said, I was, been involved in a number of the manager searches.
What would you, what would a candidate who is not selected say about their experience with your firm?
I think we want to communicate with, we'll certainly communicate with the board and staff, and whoever the appropriate person is with Person County. But we also want to communicate with the candidates as well. Like Rick, I've been through a number of searches, and you hate it when you're kind of left hanging there, and there's no communication with you. Certainly, if we keep the candidates updated as on the process, and wouldn't share information that wouldn't be appropriate as to why they weren't selected, but we would communicate with them as well.
And if I may add, I can attest to the database that we have. When I'm looking at specific candidates, I'm doing a public works director search right now, though they're candidates, they're for multiple searches, and candidates who haven't been selected, who have come back and stayed in our database and applied for other positions. So they're very, very happy with how they've been treated through our organization.
Thank you.
How do you ensure this elected candidate will be the right fit for our county?
I think I mentioned, we have a guarantee. If the candidate that you select doesn't last a year, if it doesn't work out, we'll do the search again for free. But in looking at placements that we've made, there's an 89% success rate, and they're still in the position. And those that have left stayed at least three and a half years. And I think that's a pretty good, well, it's probably about the average tenure for all managers. This is just the ones that have left. So I think if you look at those numbers there, we have a pretty good success rate of placing the right candidate in your organization. And it's through a partnership with the board. We won't tell you who to hire. We help you make the best decision. And I think we've had very good success with that.
Thank you.
Okay, the next question. What is your firm's success rate of placing a position within the search budget and schedule? You said 89% success rate before in the previous question, but I think this is more within the range of the budget and the scope, the schedule of accomplishment.
We will work within the schedule. If there's any additional outreach that is beyond the contract, then that's an extra cost. But we will work within this schedule to provide you a candidate.
How do you support our success after the placement is made?
Certainly check back in with you, see how things are going. I, again, 32 years of local government in North Carolina, past president of North Carolina City County Managers Association. I will see and talk with the new manager on multiple number of times after he or she is onboard and communicate with them. But we'd also be very happy to check in with chairperson of the board, whoever's appropriate, just to see how things are going from the board perspective.
And I can attest to that. Gov HR, when I've used them previously, has always reached out sometime after our candidates have been brought in. And I know personally, my last position, that Gov HR specifically reached out to my board, members of my board. And they recently just used them again to fill my position after I retired.
Okay, very good. That concludes the structured questions that the board had. Are there any follow-up questions that any commissioner would like to pose to Gov HR? Anything you wanted more details on? No?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm waiting. Do you have any? Okay.
Well, I do, but you go ahead.
No, no, I didn't want, I just wanted to.
I'm fine.
You mentioned staff assessments, your ability to, the local county government recruitment, material exposure, and knowledge of North Carolina classifications, compensation, and staff assessments. Is that something that you do in this process for our search, or these are additional services?
Those would be additional. That's a separate thing.
Okay.
If any organization wanted to do an assessment on staffing, or the organization, or a compensation study, we could be brought in to do that.
Okay. Are you, are you going to give us a, an assessment of the county manager's compensation here that we need to be looking at, seeing as how that you do nationwide searches, and you know that the employment environment's very different today?
I think that's certainly, that'd be a key part of the initial, is an assessment of what the salary needs to be. And some communities, they're sticker shot with that because of what's happening in the world today.
Yes, I can attest to that. Some of the recruitment I've been doing right now, and I'm actually looking, one of the counties in Illinois, they asked, they really had no clear thought on a public affairs specialist. And we've done a number of assessments on compensation. We were able to provide them a range that we felt was going to be good to bring a successful candidate in for them.
Thank you.
Yeah, just one. Being the nature of what we do, and we're in a search for a county manager, which means countywide, and I would think community input would be an integral part of what we're looking for, to help us make a good decision going forward with the manager. But I noticed that a community survey is optional. It's not included in your proposal. Why is that, why do you consider that an optional part of your search and work for us?
That's really part of a decision for the board, if you'd like to do that. And some boards, for whatever reason, don't wish to do that. I agree. I think it's very important that can be done in a variety of ways. You could have a stakeholder meetings. I would recommend, one strong recommendation would be that you also interview the management team of the organization and ask what qualities they're looking for in the leader. But also do a community outreach. That could be at county commission, or some other facility where you'd like the community to come in and talk about what they want to see in the next manager. And then there's different levels that you can go at in terms of the candidates. As a manager, I would say if you, if you release the names of the candidate, which you don't have to do in North Carolina, you will greatly limit your applicant pool. And you may have some folks who might be interested in coming to Person County, but wouldn't want to go into a public process because of fear of their elected board and their home community, or the staff there getting nervous about them looking for other opportunities.
Well, your last comments are totally understandable. Been through that before, and that's extremely important. And so I can, I can see your perspective, and how it may be detrimental to the process. And some confidentiality there is extremely important. But just a question, wanted to know. Thank you.
We could certainly do that, but would we leave that up to the elected body as to how they'd like to go in that area? But I think that's, I agree with what you're saying.
Thank you.
I have one question. I just like to ask, and we're talking, we talked about budget, and we're talking about cost and what have you. So in the past, doing So in the past, dealing with your clients, have you had a situation where you said sticker shock, but you got a budget and you come in and say, this client is going to require this salary? And the, the client says, we just can't pay it. How do you handle that situation? Do you go back to the search again? Or how do you handle that situation?
Well, if I may, we're going to work with this board here and put out a salary or a salary range that you wish to have. And one of the questions that we asked in our screening interviews of those individuals is, this is the salary, the salary range depending on qualifications, are you comfortable with that? Sometimes I just did one and an individual said, no, I need something higher. Well, when I go back to the board or come to you and talk to you and say, this is what the candidate said, you need to know this is what they talked about salary. So you could have that information from, but you're, you're commission, as commissioners, you should put together the salary you're comfortable with so we can attract the candidates around that salary.
I've got a question for you two guys. Did some scribbling as we were, you guys were talking. What is the, I'm just going to say, experience range in years of service for this position search? And how broad of a search does this go into? Like former county managers, city managers, HR directors, assistant county managers? That's a lot of, kind of thrown together there. If you need me to repeat it, I'd be glad to.
Are you asking what a candidate for this position would look like in terms of experience?
Yes, yes. And the search, where, where are you across the board looking? With city managers, human resource directors, assistant county managers, and former managers?
I think you're probably looking at someone with at least 10 years of experience. I think being a city or county manager certainly be very, very helpful. You could have someone who's been an assistant or a key department head that also might be a strong candidate. I think we would do an extensive search in North Carolina, but we would expand beyond the state of North Carolina and look Virginia, South Carolina. You, you may have folks from further away who have North Carolina ties would like to get back to the state. And I think we'd do all that, but certainly we would have a big concentration in, in, in North Carolina. But that would be my rough assessment, the experience. Rick may have a different view of that.
I agree with you, Mike. I can, I can say that one village manager search I'm conducting right now, it's nationwide. And actually, we get some international candidates for, for some searches. I'm doing a public works search and having from Canada and from overseas in Europe. But the one manager search, we bring, we're bringing an individual that the board wanted to speak to, an individual from Delaware. So they're flying in and they're one of the finals.
Okay, thank you, guys. Can I segue into what Commissioner Palmer has just stated? What is your experience or inclusion of, I'll, I'll use the term non-traditional candidate? Someone that has not been quote unquote a government employee?
I think that's one of the advantages of our web outreach is that we have so many people visiting that each month. And that gives us access to the non-traditional candidates. And I think that's certainly something that you, you have to look at. The, the great resignation that took place in the past year has made recruitment a whole lot more challenging. And because of that, I think I have to look at, at multiple different options in recruiting a manager.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, Gov HR, is there a closing statement you'd like to make to the board before we say goodbye on, on Zoom?
I'd just like to say I appreciate you giving us this opportunity to speak with you this morning. I think we're a great firm, like Rick. I thought about local government recruiting for the past year plus of my employment in local government. And I chose to work for Gov HR because of their reputation. And I think we bring North Carolina experience to the table. It would be very beneficial to you. You've got big shoes to fill and Heidi, good luck in your new position now in Matts County.
Thank you.
And we would love to help you all make a decision. This will probably be the most important decision you all will make as a board for a while. You'll be choosing your leader that hopefully will last a good long time. And whether you choose us or not, we wish you success in the process and would love to do the job for you.
Yes, I, I agree with you. Thank you very much for the opportunity. We wish the best of luck to choose us. Know that we will do an incredible job for Person County.
All right. Thank you very much for your time and for allowing us to consider you this morning. I think we're going to sign off and then you'll probably hear back from Miranda as we get a little further along in the process.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Time out? Do you want to take a five-minute break?
Yeah, we can do that.
What?
Nine thirty.
Do we need to add any score, do we need to put scores on each individual question? We're just going to do the questions here. How did you want me to do the score?
How would you like us to do it, Miranda? Could you advise?
I just had it as you do like an overall score. If it helps you individually to score it, you certainly may do that and then add them up. But sometimes you get sort of an overall impression of the score that you'd like to put.
That's fine. I did not do it, but I mean, I'll go back if I needed to do it. So yeah, I can just use this one.
Yes, you can just use that one, one there to fill in the score.
And our next one is joining us at nine forty-five. So you have a few minutes to fill out your evaluation of Gov HR and take a five-minute recess as needed.
So that answers to score and put it where?
You've got a scoring page. You've got a scoring page right on the front here for you.
Oh, oh, okay.
And it gives you some information, criteria here. So you'll talk about their presentation and then the interview questions, and then you can add them up there. If you noted any particular strengths or weaknesses, there's the box there for you.
All right, so.
Yes.
So from zero to four here, zero to four here, and you add it up.
And then you add it up.
Just want to make sure.
Yep. That's what I provided.
That made me think about it, Charlie.
Yeah, I don't know.
What was that? There's the comfort level.
It's not too much.
Yeah, Chris. Pow.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, we were, okay. We're kind of meeting back to order this time, Manager York.
Yep. Commissioners, we're ready for our second firm. I think they are with us now. Ms. Renee Narlock will be joining us. Renee, are you able to hear us?
What is it?
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you. I'm Heidi York. I am the current county manager. I am helping facilitate this process with the board here, but if not an evaluator or an assessor. I'm going to ask the five-member commissioner board to just go around and introduce themselves, and then we will plan for about a 10- to 15-minute presentation from you, followed by about 10 questions and around robin's style with our commissioners. And then we'll leave a little time at the end for follow-up as well. So, thank you for being with us. Can you tell us where you're joining us from today?
Yes, I'm in Tallahassee, Florida, which is my hometown of 30 years. I have an office here in Tallahassee and a satellite office in Texas. So, it's unusual that I'm home, but I'm home today.
Great. Chairman Powell, would you like to start with introduction?
Yes. Good morning and welcome. My name is Gordon Powell, Commission Chair. Glad to have you this morning.
Thank you, Chairman.
My name is Derek Sims, Vice Chair, Commissioner.
Commissioner Palmer, Charlie Palmer, thanks for taking, thanks for offering your services to us.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. I'm PJ Gentry. Thanks for being with us this morning.
Thank you.
Good morning, Kyle Preier, Commissioner. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Very nice to meet all of you.
All right, Renee, if you are ready to give us about a 10- to 15-minute presentation or sort of an overview of your services and how you'll help our board here with their next manager placement.
Will do. Thank you very much. First of all, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to talk with you. I have been doing some research and certainly looking through the information that was sent to us about the services that you're looking for, and we're very excited about the opportunity to get, to be able to respond and then now to talk with each of you. A little bit about me, as I mentioned, I'm in Tallahassee today. That's where my home office is, if you will, meaning my main office. I have been in Tallahassee for many years. I came to Tallahassee to go to school, ended up lauding the community and raised my family here in my spare time. I'm very busy with my wonderful five grandchildren, all under seven, all boys. So, I've become a quick expert in monster trucks and fishing baits these days, but lots of fun. That's what I love to do in my spare time. I've been in business as Renee Narlock and Associates for going on 10 years now. Prior to that, I worked in the same capacity, doing the same kind of work for about 15 years. And my, my company at the time was stationed, was in Sacramento. That was the main office. So, the Sacramento office did all the recruitments west of the Rockies, and I did everything east of the Rockies. So, I've been in the business for 25-plus years now. I lost count of how many searches we've done now. I think we're 400, 500-plus. All, all public sector, for the most part. Occasionally, a board member like yourself might be serving on another board in a private capacity and ask us to help recruit an executive director for a nonprofit or something like that. Primarily, I'd say 97% of our clients are public sector agencies. This ranges from cities, counties, and all in between, quasi-governmental agencies, housing authorities, a variety of types of clients, a variety of positions, county managers, city managers, a lot of department directors, police chiefs, fire chiefs, city attorneys, the list goes on. But we do specialize in public sector searches. And I have done work in North Carolina. I've done, well, I've done work really anywhere to the side of the Rockies. A lot of work in Texas, certainly a lot in Florida, because I'm in Florida. Some work in Georgia, the Carolinas, Virginia, and a little bit up in the Northeast and certainly in the Midwest. Some, some agencies in Kansas and Nebraska. So, I've been around. Been doing it a long time. As far as county managers, and specifically in North Carolina, I had the privilege of working with Wade County when they hired Jim Hargrove, and that was several years back. And then Jim retired, and I had the pleasure of filling that job again. They, they hired me again to find Jim's replacement after he retired. Great group of folks over in Wade County. Really enjoyed that time there. More recently, I've been working with Cumberland County to help, to help the county manager there find an assistant county manager. We just finished that search. It was an interesting search because midstream, the deputy left, the deputy county manager went away. So, we had to kind of re-navigate ourselves to, to look for kind of a different candidate upstream. But we did, and it was certainly a successful search, and I really enjoyed working with the folks over in Cumberland County. I think I kind of bring that up because there's some big differential differentiation between Wade County and Cumberland County, quite frankly, and what they need as a county manager or assistant, as a team over there. I have done some work for Durham. It's been a while. I remember IT director search I did for them. I also worked in Durham County, again, probably five years or so, to find them a farm marshal. And, and then there was a dual role position with that farm marshal, emergency management director that actually served the city and the county. So, that was an interesting search in that it was just a diversified set of responsibilities for that particular search. So, I think probably the largest county I've ever served in regard to a county manager is probably Palm Beach County, which is huge. And that was probably, I don't know, maybe five years ago. Good search, very political, very political, and a lot of input. We had a selection committee that we had to meet with on a regular basis before it got to the commission. And it was, it was a lot of heavy lifting, but very successful. A lot of other county manager searches involved there. I also just finished a search for Lake Lour, North Carolina, their town manager. Great experience, great search, worked closely with the council there. I'm sure if you need to talk to the mayor, she'd be glad to talk with me. They actually have now hired me again to help them find a project manager. Lake Lour's biggest challenge was rebuilding their dam. They had to completely rebuild it, and it's pretty extensive. So, we had to find a certain kind of manager that could oversee that. And the second engagement they just hired me for is actually the project manager for that position. But great process, great candidates. Really, really enjoyed working with the folks there. Lake Lour is beautiful. No, no need to say that. But, you know, they have challenges, too. They're a small community. They're, they're a resort community. They're trying to figure out how do they get, you know, they, they have trouble with internet connection there. They're trying to figure out how do they get cable laid through rocks in Lake Lour. So, you know, a lot of challenges there in addition to the dam, but we, we did have a very successful recruitment there. So, regarding our services in particular, you have our proposal there. It's pretty straightforward on the steps that we take. We work very closely with you and HR as needed to make sure, you know, what we're doing all the time. We, we'll give you a timeline, set out the milestones for each step, so you know that we're on time and that we're hitting them, and that we're moving along, because that's important. Once we get this started, we need to keep the pace and keep momentum throughout. There's really kind of three different things we're doing here. We're recruiting candidates, but we're also managing the process, and at the same time, making sure that we connect with your community and get the right person for you at this time. Sort of three different things that we have going on there at the same time. So, first step is really identifying that profile. It's not just the profile of the position, what you need in a manager, but the profile of the community. And that starts whenever we get a go on the contract, we come onsite very soon thereafter. And while we're there, we'd like to sit down with each of you individually, and I've got a long list of really great questions to find out about what you see beyond the job description as far as a good fit for you. What, what's, what does that look like? Because we want the person to come there, we want it to fit their career goals, their personal life. We want them to become part of your community, but we also need them to fit the culture of your organization. We need them to be able to take on the challenges that exist currently, but also future challenges. So, there's a lot of questions that goes into how do we find out that information from you, but also from community members. I, I saw on your RFP that you were interested in community engagement. We will certainly hold a, an open meeting to have people come in and tell us what they, what they want to share with us about what's needed in this role. And so, that's going to be really important. From, from that and from talking with you, talking with department directors, if you're good with that, we're going to learn a lot about the needs of the organization, not only now, but going forward. And that's where we develop the, what I call the profile, the full profile of the position and the profile of the community. That said, our steps, as I said, are outlined in the proposal. I do want to highlight that while we've done this hundreds of times and we use the same process, no two are the same. We develop a strategy specifically for you, for this position, or now, for your community. And we use the same steps in our process, but this is really, I think, where we shine in comparison to others and why we are so successful at what we do. Because we just, we've done this enough. We know how important it is to get a good fit. So, we, we ask the right questions, we dig down, and we find those candidates that will meet your needs. And that includes our outreach efforts. We don't just put ads. We do place ads, and we place them strategically. But beyond that, we really scale down to matching skill sets, matching experience, and then we go after candidates. It's not unusual for us to reach out to, really, if we're doing phone calls, which, we do phone calls, we do emails, and then we do association contacts where we get the word out there. We really push the word out, like through the North Carolina League of Cities, Municipal League. We, we will reach out to upwards of 1,500 people, honestly, across the nation. We're going to spread a broad net. We understand North Carolina experience is valuable, but there may be someone who did manage in North Carolina, went somewhere else for a time being, is ready to come back. They may even be from the area, you know, it just seems things happen that way. So, we will reach out across the nation, but we'll weigh all these factors out and what's, what's the best fit for you? Who's going to come and stay with you for a while, right? You have the benefit of longevity here and stability here with your manager. And we want to make sure that we don't have someone that's coming in and going to be gone in two years, or they're billing their resume by coming here. That's not what we're looking for. That said, I just want to point out that we're, we are used to working with public sector agencies. We understand there are, you know, things like public records requests and open meetings and executive session meetings, and how to protect a search, if you will, and how to protect information, how to protect candidates as we go forward, so we don't lose them. We don't talk out of school. This is your business, not everybody else's. And any requests we get for any information, we refer those back to the county, to the proper person to say, here's a request, you know, if you need information from us to fulfill it, we'll certainly do that in a timely fashion. So, we, we sort of know the ropes of how to have a successful search and get you, and get you where you need to be to a successful hire here. Some things that candidates want to know from us, quite frankly, on a search is about you as the commission. They, they want, Renee, what do they like? So, that's the benefit, too, of me coming and sitting down with you individually and learning about you individually. They want to know about financial status of the county, so that's something that I will be asking more about. They want to know what kind of community. They will have done this work on their own. The right candidates will have. They probably will show up. You may see an unusual face in, or, or I should say, a, a new face in your meetings over the next month or so. That could very well be a potential candidate. That's typically what good candidates do. They show up and they check it out. Of course, and they go around the community, they learn what they need to learn before they make a decision to, to compete for a job. They will, of course, want to know about the community. They want to know about any opportunities and challenges that face them. They will also want to know if there's any internal candidates who have an interest and why the position is open. And I think we certainly can answer that question for them. But these are the kind of questions that we'll get from the candidates as we go forward and do our recruitment. What I will be interested in learning from you on site visit is more about what are you looking for in a candidate? What kind of experience? What kind of educational experience are they, do you want a credential manager? Do you not? Is that just, you know, a plus? Do, what are you looking for, really? And what's the secondary strength of the county manager? And when I say that, that could be, or maybe they came through finance to get to where they are. Maybe they came up through economic development. You know, what is that secondary strength that would play well for you going forward to meet your needs that you currently have going on? I will ask you about salary. Where's your comfort level in salary? Where is your comfort level as far as contract terms? You know, these are all things that I will delve into whenever I come onsite to meet with you. So, I think I'm probably close to my 10- to 15-minute mark. I'm going to take a breather here and answer any questions that I can for you.
Thank you, Renee.
Sure.
Commissioners, did you want to follow up on anything with that? Are you ready to go into the structured questions?
Unfortunately, Renee, I can ask questions after.
Okay, sure. So, our chairman will start, and then they'll just rotate around.
Okay, well, good morning again. First question is, what are your firm's specialty areas? And how will that make you a successful partner for our executive search process?
Thank you, Chairman. Our special area, specialty areas are public sector recruitments, executive recruitments, primarily department directors and higher positions within local government agencies. That would be cities and counties, even some special districts and some quasi-judicial organizations.
Okay, thank you.
How many searches will our consultant be working on at a time?
Thank you, Commissioner. I am your consultant. I do have staff that support me. They're very good. They're very trained. They've been with me for a long time. But I am your consultant. I am the one that will be communicating with you directly. I will be presenting to you. I will be making recommendations. I will be doing preliminary interviews with candidates in preparation for recommendations and facilitating your interviews. Right now, you know, it's interesting because searches are in various stages. Some are winding down right now. I have two in Baytown, Texas, great organization. They hired me, this is probably the fourth and fifth search they've hired me for in the last couple of years. They just finished their city attorney search, which I did for them. We were waiting for a background check to clear, and that one's done. And then we're in the process of an assistant city manager search for them, I would say about halfway. So, I would say there's probably going to be five or six active searches going on as yours is going on. But I would say half of those are probably in the latter stages. So, as far as new searches, once you choose our firm, I think this week, I just signed a contract this morning for a building official in a, a community in Florida. And so, those will be the two searches, the building official and your search, will be starting, will be in the starting stages. So, we're in, we're in a place where we can certainly manage the workload and, and really give your search the attention that it needs. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
What would you say defines a successful search?
That is a great question, Commissioner. So, for you, a successful search is someone who comes in, can hit the ground running, acclimates quickly to not only you, but your community and your staff, and carries you forward. I'm going to say five to seven years. That's, and, 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 and it's, it's just a, a good fit for both of you. For me, a successful search is to find, to really drill down to that fit question, which there's so many elements that go into that. But a successful search for me is to find great candidates that all fit, and I bring those to you. So, you have maybe five candidates that fit your needs, and you have options, right? They, they're not all the same candidate cut from the same fabric. There's some diversity in there. Maybe some of them are further along in their career. Maybe some of them are mid-career. Maybe some, you know, we have, we have, we have diversity relative to race, to gender, to background, to experience. Maybe some people were in private sector, and now they're in public. And there's an advantage to that, right? If you're trying to establish some private-public partnerships, they know the ropes. So, I like to bring you a variation of candidates. All, like, I'm using five as a magic number. All five could do a great job, but they all are a little bit different. So, you have some choices amongst the five. That's so, I just feel like you're better served if I give you choices, right? Not, oh, we've got to settle with this candidate. We don't do that. So, that's a successful search for me. What it also does is it helps you to get to a consensus as a commission on deciding on a final candidate. What I hear a lot is, I hear a commission say, hey, you know, we're, we're going to What I hear a lot is, I hear a commission say, hey, you know, we're, we're in agreement that these two candidates are fantastic, right? If we get either one of these, we're happy. What that does is that helps the five of you to come to an agreement. Because if you're happy with two of them, whether you get your first pick or your second pick, you're still happy, right? So I have to conduct a search in such a manner that you have good choices. So that's how I defined a successful search for me.
Great answer, thank you.
Can you please describe again your search and candidate screening process?
Yes. So, once we have recruited and we have a pool of candidates, and I monitor that pool as we go to make sure it's reaching a level that I'm, that I'm satisfied with. Once that happens, we do our, before we, before we talk to candidates, we do a Nexus search. It's, it's kind of a fly-by-Nexus search, because we wanna know if there's anything in the background of the candidates before we even talk with them that we need to know about. Sometimes we will rule someone out ourselves based on that. Sometimes we look at it and say, you know, there's probably more to the story, so let's give them the benefit of the doubt. And at that point, we set up preliminary interviews with those that we feel most closely match what you're looking for. I go through at least an hour interview with the candidates. I ask some specific questions that help me understand the things I need to know at that point, their management style, their experience, you know, talk to me about the organization you work with, you know, how big was it, what size was your budget, you know? Are you full service, you know, do you have, do you have parks and rec, do you have, you know, health and human services, what do you have? It just helps me to understand more about them, but also, you know, are there any roadblocks to them taking this position? Is there anything in the background we need to talk about? By that time, I may know it already, I will find it out if there is, and, and, but I give them a chance to tell me or explain things. So, I do preliminary interview, from that preliminary interview, I follow up and do research to make sure that what they told me aligns with what I find out about them through other means. And then, I make a decision on who I feel your strongest candidates are. I then bring them, I then make recommendations to you about the candidates and I say, listen, these are the ones I've talked with. This is what I think, these are my recommendations, what do you wanna do as far as moving them forward to the next step? As we go, we're continuing to do Nexus searches and at some level, social media searches to see if anything develops on these candidates as we go. We wanna know what's going on and all, all through the search, we wanna know what's going on with candidates. But then we get to a process where you interview them and you have further interest in them. That's when things kick into where we start getting more into their business. That means checking references, that means doing background checks, as we get further and further along on candidates that you like. But we always have to have a comfort level, Commissioner, on each candidate as we go, right? If there's some questions there, we do our research, we delve into it to find out more about them, so that we're not bringing you candidates that you're gonna, you know, that we're gonna be surprised about something or find out something, you know, at some critical point. We keep our finger on the pulse of what's going on in candidates all along.
What deliverables and communications can we expect from your firm through this process?
Another great question. We will give you a timeline that actually has milestones on it, on it as our deliverables and a date associated with it. Those dates are a bit flexible, but we wanna make sure that we're very close to hitting all of those dates. And, I'm sorry, the first part of the question was what's the deliverables, and the second part was?
Communications.
Communications, thank you. That is super important through this process. We will give you updates as we go, we like to do them weekly, but we do get in some phases of the search where there's not a lot going on to report, you know, like maybe we're, we're still recruiting, right? And recruiting, recruiting takes us a few weeks to do. So, we just might report to you, things are looking good, we're still recruiting, we're getting a lot of interest. You know, I need some clarification on a few questions that I thought, and maybe that kind of update. As we get closer to making recommendations and doing interviews, I'll probably be talking to you on a pretty regular basis, certainly weekly. If, if the chairman becomes my point of contact for the commission, I'll pro, I may be talking to him daily as we get into interviews. I may be communicating with the HR director at some point, giving her updates on where we are, things I may need from her. But I have one search I'm doing now where I'm literally calling all of the council members individually at least once a week and having conversations with them individually. So, we, we stay in touch, it's a very important part of our process.
You okay with that one? Okay, next question is, how would your former clients and candidates describe your approach?
So, interesting thing about my former candidates, there have been numerous times over the years where a candidate in one of my searches who did not get selected for the job had such a great experience that when, when the agency they worked for needed a, a search firm, they let the HR director know, hey, when we're doing this search for our city manager, county manager, or, you know, police chief or whatever, you need to make sure you call her and get her in the fold as far as responding to our proposal. I had a great experience with her, most candidates tell me that. They said, this has been a much smoother experience, much more informed experience, and I, I really appreciate getting to know you, I appreciate how you've handled it. I think they feel like I'm looking out for them too, I work for you, but I'm also looking out for candidates that, that they have a good experience. But the truth is, how this search goes sets the tone for them of their relationship with you. They had, they have a bad experience with the search, I mean, they still may get to the seat and it may be, you know, maybe great, but it just sets a tone, and, and we don't need that, we need them to have a good experience. I'm an extension of you. Clients, really the same thing, even in difficult searches that I have, and there have been some, and, and, you know, there's all kind of dynamics that play into that. Even in difficult searches that I've had, I have had my, my council members or commissioners that I'm working with or whoever I'm working with at the time, just say, okay, you know, we're, we're hanging in there, we have to go out again. Sometimes it's about timing, and what comes to mind is COVID years, quite frankly, it was quite difficult sometimes to have somebody show up for an interview, because nobody was doing that at the time. Because of COVID, and I understand it, and we had to work around it. So, even when we had challenges with our process, my clients felt really good about how it was handled. They, they understood it, empathized, I guess, at some level. But I tell you, we, we're just really objective, we're really fair, we, we're gonna do things above board, you know, and they, and my clients appreciate that. And I'm sticking with them till the end, whatever that means, I don't give up, I don't give out, and we just work through things. Now that said, I can tell you, majority of the searches go without a hitch, and I often hear mayors and council members say to me, you know, that was the most seamless process. You know, many of them hire us again, most of our clients are repeat clients. My goal is that you call me again after the search, when you need, I'm not, when you need a department director, that's my goal. That tells me I did, I did the right thing by you, and that's what happens a lot. I mentioned Baytown now, I went fit search with them, you know, different agencies call us back all the time to help them again and again. So, clients and candidates alike speak very highly of us, and really, this is a people business. You need to like who you're working with as a consultant, and I love what I do. I love meeting new people, I love working with people. This is an important decision for people to make about changing jobs and relocating their family perhaps. Maybe long distance even, it's a very important decision. And I have a lot of respect for the people who do this job as a, as a career. It's not an easy job, it's certainly getting more challenging as, as times go. So, I want to, I, I take what I do very serious and want, want it to be a good experience for everybody.
Thank you.
You may have already touched on this, the previous question, but my question is, what would a candidate who is not selected say about their experience with your firm, your firm?
I have numerous candidates who, who actually have helped me be considered for searches with organizations they're with. Even, as a matter of fact, not only recommending me to their firm, but say I did a town manager search for Lakeport, there's only one person who got that job. So there's a lot of people who don't get it, and there's a lot of people who really wanted it. I mean, that's a, that's a cream of the crop job for, for that type of position, certainly in North Carolina. And those other city managers and town managers who did not get the job will now call me and say, hey, I need a police chief, you know, I had a good experience with you, and they told me that. Even when I called them, because I called them personally, if I've talked to you about a job and you're not getting it, I owe you a phone call. You know, I'm not gonna, oh, you know, send you a text or an email and say, sorry, you know, no, 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 no. So, when I call them, that's generally how the call goes. You know, Renee, I appreciate it, I understand why the town went that way, I get it, I want them to have the right person. I'm still interested in other opportunities, keep me in mind, and by the way, when I need, when I need to hire a director or someone for my agency, I will be giving you a call. Sometimes on the call itself, Commissioner, they'll say, listen, are you interested in doing a police chief search for me? And I say, yes, I am. So, so I think that's, you know, I think that's indicative of, of just how we do business.
Thank you. How do you ensure the selected candidate will be the right fit for our county?
That is a great question. So, when I talk about that profile on the front end, that's why it's so important. That's why we spend a lot of time on that, that's where our strategy lies. There's just so many pieces that go into what is a good fit. And it's things that you don't normally think about. I mean, you think about the requirements and the background and experience and, you know, but there's things beyond that. And it's usually in my preliminary interviews when that information comes out, right? You know, why, you know, the question for me is, you know, why Person County, why now? And I'll hear things like, well, you know, I, I grew up in Person County. Or I'll hear things like, you know, I wanna get back to that area. Or I, you know, this happened a lot in COVID, I, I don't wanna be in the state I'm in now or the community I'm in now. It has a lot to do with politics, it has a lot to do with the lockdowns and things like that. A lot of times I'll hear, my kids are going, my, my, you know, my daughter's about to go to UNC, you know, I need to get in the area, not too close, but in the area. I may hear, I have elderly parents who live in the region and I have to be close to them now. So there's all of these other things that, you know, we might not see on paper that matter about whether this fits them, meaning the candidate. Does it fit their personal needs, you know, outside of the job? They've got maybe a family, they've got extended family, they've got, you know, maybe they're just, they're an outdoors person and they, you know, they need to get back to the mountains. You know, there's something that ties to them personally that makes this fit their lifestyle, right? And their needs personally, but also their career goals, right? So that's one of the things I hone in on. If, if this just looks like a placeholder job for you based on what you've done, you're not my candidate. You know, I'm okay with this being maybe a step up for you, maybe you've been an assistant county or deputy county manager at a large county in North Carolina for some time, you've handled all the departments at some time, you've been groomed for this, you're putting your time as assistant, it's time to you, there's some reason to be a county manager. I get that step up, but I don't wanna step up, you know, that is someone just kinda stepping up to go somewhere else. So, you know, it's gotta make sense to me, there's a lot of common sense in this decision. It's gotta make sense to me that all of these things, personal, professional, everything winds up with coming to Person County. Because if it doesn't, you're trying to put a square peg in a round hole, and they may do a good job for a little while, but ultimately, there's gonna be something that's pulling them somewhere else. So, you know, I have recruited for, for communities, and I mentioned this, you know, Cumberland and Wake are very different, right? Very different. And so, one are not better than the other, they're different. And I need to make sure my candidates, they, there's gotta be something in, in, with them that convinces me that they're, they're going to fit Cumberland, or they're gonna fit Wake, or they're gonna fit Person County, right? Because it's different, it's just different, they're gonna love it or they're not. And, and, you know, that's kinda my sixth sense, I guess, as a recruiter. But that's what makes, that's what ultimately makes the difference. We can check all the boxes on, you know, the requirements and what have you, but it's those other things where their personal goals and their career goals and their personal lifestyle, it needs to make sense, they're gonna come to Person County, they're gonna like it there, they're gonna fit, and they're gonna stay.
Thanks so much, that's a great answer.
What's your firm's success rate when placing people in positions within the timeline and the budget process?
Well, I'm telling you, budget-wise, what we quote is where we stay. We don't, there's no add-ons or anything like that to that fee. If it takes longer, it takes longer, and if it doesn't, that's great. I would say probably, you know, and I'm looking, I'm trying to think about the COVID years too, because it just sort of skewed things a little bit. But again, it, it didn't really affect the outcome, it just maybe took longer in some instances. I'm gonna say that probably, I don't know, I'm gonna say ninety percent are done on time, meaning the original projected date. If they're not done on that timeline, it's not much longer than that. If we have to go out and supplement the pool of candidates for some reason, it's probably a thirty-day supplementation process. I've got one now that has just been really, really challenging. I knew it going in, they honestly warned me before I took it and said, are you sure you wanna do this? And the truth is, yes, I did wanna do it, because I know I can help them and I have been able to help them. And just, I guess, what I wanna convey there is I am doing my best to ensure that they hire a professional manager. In the past, they have, they have, they've offered the position and actually hired people who were not city managers in the past, who didn't have any experience being a city manager in the past, and they ended up in a bad place. So, my goal for this particular search is to stay the course on getting a professional, because that's what's gonna serve them best, and they're in agreement with that. So I would say probably ninety percent fly right through the search process of the timeline that's projected.
Thank you.
How do you support our, how do you support our success after the placement is made?
So, I check in with candidates and the clients after a placement, and, you know, I tell you what I typically hear is they're doing a great job and we are super happy and, and they jump right in and, and, you know, it's just been a really great placement. What I do is I, I do listen to hear if there's any areas that they're saying things like, you know, they're having to spend a little bit more time coming up to speed in this particular area. And, and my conversation with the client at that point is, you know, are there ways that you can help them, right? Are there, is there training, is there something that you can propose to help them get up to speed in that particular area? With the candidates, same kind of conversation, you know, where do you feel like you may be struggling? Or it's taking more than you thought to get up to speed in certain areas? And in that regard too, you know, how do you? And in that regard too, you know, have you reached out to colleagues? Have you reached out to other counties to see how they're doing it? You know, do you know any consultants who are, are specialized in that area, best practices, that you're friends with, that can just guide you and direct you to resources? I, I tell you the truth, usually, everybody's just jumping in and they're so busy that they feel really good about where they are and what they're doing. And that goes back to that fit, uh, skill set and aligning those to begin with, that they're able to just walk in day one. Let me just comment on that too, Commissioner. If you do not have a performance review process in place, we often help our clients establish. I did with Lake Lur. I had to provide them some performance review materials because the ones they had just really didn't reach the level that they wanted to as far as evaluating the manager. And they're gonna do a performance review at six months. It's not tied to a raise or anything like that. It's just more for where are we and where do we need to tighten up? Or how, you know, maybe, maybe we're doing great. Maybe we're ahead of schedule, which is what I expect there. But they didn't have the right tools to do that, so I did help them with drafting a performance review.
All right. Thank you. That concludes the structured questions of the board. Are there any follow-up questions from commissioners that you would like to pose to Renee?
One of the comments you made earlier was about an open meeting with the community, I guess. Is that, and that is part of your quote that you've given us, or is that extra?
Yes, yes, sir. That is part of it. As a matter of fact, there are, there's a few suggestions I'll make, and I'll talk with each of you and get a consensus on what you want to do. In, in certain places, we've not only done that open meeting with community members, we've sat in with department directors around the table to say, you know, just give us your input. Now, I, I want to make clear to you, we understand who makes the hiring decision here. So anything we do as far as garnering input outside of the five of you, that's just informational purposes for us. That helps us with that good fit. And it, it really gives us a 360 on the organization and the community, and quite frankly, the staff. It's gonna be important for the county manager to know, what does the bench look like? Where are the strengths? You know, not, not, we don't have to get too detailed, but in general, what kind of, kind of team does, does, you know, the county have in, in the department director level? But, um, there's, you know, we can also suggest, if you're open to it, putting something on your website. We certainly want the job posted on your website, and we'll direct applicants to our site to apply, so we can corral them all. But in the past, with some agencies, we've even had a blurb on the homepage of the county's website that said, if you want to give input regarding the county manager search, and it can be anonymous, we'll do a survey, anonymous survey, if you will. If you want to go to that extent, I don't know that you need to do that, but it's an option. So what we always want to do is send a message that we're, you know, we're listening. We're here, we're listening. But certainly that open meeting that we talked about, that is not additional. That's when I come on site to sit down with all of you. We'll schedule that meeting for a convenient time, probably after work, so people can show up. And I just open it up, you know. I want to hear from you as the community, anything you would like to share with me about this process, about the new county manager, what you see as challenges and opportunities in hiring this person. And, you know, I listen, I'm all ears. I go, I go on my listening tour and, and listen. It, it's helpful in a couple of ways. First of all, the information, but secondly, getting to know the community members and hearing them. I'll assume that these are the people that show up to your meetings to write that, that you interact with on a regular basis. And I'm able then to share with candidates, you know, I met with department directors, you know, they, they're, you know, and share information about that, or I met with the community. And, you know, what I really want to find out is if there's people growing in different directions here, or if everybody's, generally speaking, rolling in the same direction as far as the county and the, and the, the issues that you deal with. And it's okay, whatever it is, it is, but I just kind of need to know that because those are the kind of things that potential candidates will know.
And I have one more question. Talking about websites, do you track how many visits to your website that you get? Maybe a month of day or what have you?
We do have statistics. What I look at more closely is actual applications that come in. I need to see there's a steady stream of applications coming in. If there's not, there's a problem. So that's what I monitor, and I also monitor the caliber of candidates who are applying. I'll tell you right now, we'll have people who apply that will get no consideration. You know, they, they, they don't have the experience. They don't meet minimum qualifications. That's fine. You know, it's open. Anybody can apply. But I need to see that we're hitting the mark on, on solid candidates, as I call it, as we go. If we're not, I have to ramp up something on my end as far as outreach is concerned. The other thing that I do pay attention to is the number of phone calls and people who reach out to me, right? Typically, I'll say my better candidates will call me before they ever apply. And they'll, and I, you know, I can tell by the questions they ask me whether, whether they're a strong candidate in hand. And if I'm not getting those calls or callbacks from people that I'm reaching out to, those are the numbers that I really follow closely. I will tell you that some of our ads do get reposted by places like Indeed.com and others. Occasionally, there'll be some of the candidates come from those sources. But a lot of times, that just means a lot of resumes from people who don't meet minimum qualifications. So the numbers will go up, but they're not who I'm looking for. So even in, but we do, to answer your question, yes, we do have the ability to look at the stats.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other follow-up questions?
No, maybe I have one. I know you're looking for highly qualified people. You talked about that in your application. And I want maybe one question. Do you give much credence to what I would qualify as a non-traditional candidate?
Yes. I, I get that question a lot, and I'm gonna say the fact that you asked the question is something that I need to know going forward. Because there's people who say, no, we don't want non-traditional candidates, right? We don't want to consider those. And that's one of the questions that I would ask you when I have a sit-down with you individually. But that said, I am certainly open to that, open to recruiting those, open to doing outreach, placing ads in a place where we might not get a, a traditional candidate. And even when I assess candidates and evaluate them, I am open, if that's the will of the commission, I am open to looking at candidates that come from a non-traditional background. And that's what I was talking about when I do make recommendations, how I like to have that diversity among people. That's one of the areas that I will roll into the search strategy, knowing that you're open to that.
Yeah, just not to exclude anyone. As previously mentioned, this is the single most important job of this board, is to hire a county manager. That not only is a person that we're responsible for supervising, the only person that we're responsible for supervising, but in that person, we need the expertise to pick up right now where a person candidate is and move forward. We don't want to waste a lot of time on water under the bridge. It's, it's already gone. It's done. It's over. So let's go forward. So just to be all-inclusive in, in the search is what I would like to see. And you mentioned, uh, community involvement. I, I think that's a priority. We want to know what the community thinks and wants, and we factor that into the decision about the manager. Would, you, you mentioned having a sit-down. Now, would, that would be sort of a town hall type? And that is where the community would come to you. They would talk to you, not, not to this board, but speak to you. Okay, would there be a paper, so to speak, survey that would go out to the community as well? Or just a town hall sit-down?
We can do a town hall sit-down. We can have a paper survey with us. And we can even offer the survey online. That can be one of the things at the town hall meeting. We can say, if someone didn't make it that you know would like to fill this out, take one. If you want to fill it out, fill it out. Give it to me. I'm here. And also, you know, here's my card with an email on it or a link on it that you can let others know that you know, you can get the word out for us. And have them go to this link, type in their comments, and it's going to come directly to me anonymously. And, you know, I think that will help us get as broad of a, of a group of people in the community. Because not everyone will be able to make the meeting. But I think it, I, I will tell you in the past, when I've done these, it seems to cause the community kind of to exhale once they meet me, right? They realize, okay, she seems to know where she's going. She seems to be a real person. She seems to care, you know. And they're, and they're like, okay, I think we're good here, you know. And it, it helps them calm down a little bit about this whole process, and it helps them feel included, which is super important, you know.
Now, are both of these included in your proposal?
Yes.
That you would, okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
I've been going to video meetings a lot as a result of COVID. And I think our proposal now says three meetings onsite, video, in-person. But I have to come to Person County. I would try to get there today. I have some troubles travel-wise, but I have to come see you. I've not worked with you before. I need, I really need to sit down with you. We need to talk. I need to talk to the community. I need to be in your community. So as soon as I get the notification that we're on board and we get papers signed, I'll be, I'll be talking with folks on your end about your schedules, and we're gonna schedule that onsite visit as soon as possible. That will include that town meeting. That'll give us some time to get it out. We'll ask, you know, for public information on your end to broadcast it, get the word out. We can make an announcement of the meeting. Hey, she's gonna be here, and they can fill the room up. And I will take as much time as I need to, but it's very helpful, I think, for them to meet me and certainly for me to meet them.
Thank you.
All right. I think that concludes the questions from the board. Renee, is there anything you'd like to make in a, a closing statement before we say goodbye to you today?
Thank you so much, first of all, for, again, the opportunity to meet with you and talk with you. I, I, and I love what I do, and it's, it's wonderful to meet new clients and to do, work with new clients. And this is certainly a search that we're excited about, the opportunity to do. I just wanted to circle back on the process to let you know that, and I think it's important for your community to know this too, as we go, we keep you informed, as I mentioned, the communications. But we also let you know who else applied for the position. If you want access to resumes, we give those to you. What I want you to know is that we're not making the decision for you. We're not, you know, bringing you five candidates and say, hey, these are the people that you talk to. And, you know, we're not telling you anything about anybody else that applied. No, that. We give you a list of, at, at some point in the process, we share with you a list of everyone who applied so you can at least see who the people are. You know, you might find somebody on that list that you know, right, in the community or, or whomever. I mean, obviously, we'll keep you apprised that if there's any internal candidates also. That's very important for you to know that. And we're used to having internal candidates, so if we have some, that's fine. We roll into the process and move forward. But I just want to make sure that, you know, our recommendations are our recommendations, right? You take them, you take some of them, you take none of them, but you're, you're steering this thing. You're ma, this is a big decision for you, and you're steering this process. Now, if there's any point along the way where I feel like you decided, oh, we're not gonna do that, and I think you really need to do this, you know, you're gonna miss out here. I, I really think you should. I will emphasize that. I would say, hey, listen, you know, I'm gonna go back over here and talk about this again because I think you should really talk with this candidate. I know, look at paper and what I've told you, maybe you're like, I don't know. I will emphasize, I won't let you lose out on something that I think is, is to your benefit. Again, you may not take my recommendation the second time. So what I wanted to leave you with is, I'm running the process, but I'm doing it at your direction, right? I, I will keep it going forward. We'll get good momentum. We'll stay in our lane. We won't get sidetracked or off-track. We'll get where we need to go. We'll have a successful outcome here. But I want to emphasize, I know who's making this decision. My job is to give you great candidates and the best information for you to decide who is the best candidate when we get to an interview process. I have a process that's very good. I'll give you suggested questions. I'll give you rating and ranking sheets. We'll have a process that really empowers you with information of how to make the best decision. And my goal is always with my clients to make your decision really, really tough. I want you to say, I don't know which one to pick. It's so hard. And I, that's typically what I hear from my clients. So I'll leave you with that thought. And again, with just thanking you for your time. I hope I haven't run over. And I really appreciate your consideration. I hope to hear from you soon. Do you have any follow-up questions? Miranda, I think, has my cell number. By the way, that number you will have soon. And we'll, we'll do a lot of our, I, I'm always available. Cell number is, you know, it's always on, and I'm always available if you have any questions. And thank you again. It's very nice meeting all of you.
Thank you.
Go Gators.
Oh, had to get that in. Just had to get that in.
Did, I did.
I do love the Gators. Don't tell anybody. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
I don't like Wolf Pack so much. I'm just glad you're there right now.
Oh, man, strike one.
Thank you.
You too.
Charlie, you need another break?
Lay down. I need, yeah, where's the coffee, guys? Come on. We need a curry in here, okay? Is that the budget? Is that an office expense?
All right, Miranda, do you want to talk to them about what you're looking for in terms of the forms or?
Sure. So you're gonna go through the same process with this one that you went with the other one and, and fill out that first sheet on the interview question form? And then, after you've done that, then you're also gonna have the recommendation sheet, and it has both of the firms on it. It lists at the top the instructions. I can help you find that in your ticket. You got it? Okay.
Executive search recommendation.
And then you've got this one. You just did it. Yep. Let me see here.
First rate, first correct.
Your interview, and then your executive search recommendation is right here. So you'll fill this one out for the, for the firm that we just spoke to. And then once you've done that, then you'll sort of assess which of the firms is your recommended firm.
Your first choice or second choice.
And then I can take them.
So, okay, we're gonna do these individually. We're not gonna talk once.
Yep, you just do them individually.
Unless the board wants to have some discussion. How do you want to do that?
We, we can. I usually have people do them individually.
Okay.
And then we can discuss because otherwise sometimes they sway each other. And we can get to the swaying part in a moment.
Okay.
Yep. So if you wanted to keep, if we're gonna have more discussion, then you can keep that for a moment. So if you wanted to keep it, we're going to have more discussion, then you can keep that for a moment. What do we give back to you? I'm going to have three sheets ultimately when you're done. So, and then did you want to keep these for a moment for discussion?
Okay.
Okay. I misspoke, I'm going to keep the interview notes as well. The questions? Yeah. Okay, do you need this to go on the top of it? Or how are you going to know which ones are which? Because the notes aren't listed. Yeah, it'll go with. The cover sheet? Wait, don't you think you keep your cover sheet? It'll go with the scoring sheet for that particular one.
Do we do the executive search preliminary scoring also?
Nope, that one I already did for you. So you could see kind of how we made the decision of who we were speaking to today. Just a reference sheet.
So what do you need from this?
I don't need that one. Nope, that's informational for you.
Just everything we wrote down on.
Yep, everything you wrote on. So according to our RFP, we have a little bit of time to determine who we, who you all want to select. So that decision doesn't necessarily have to come today. I would recommend that it does, then we're ahead of schedule. That's always nice. So if you guys have a consensus, if you want to have a little bit of discussion and then if you have a consensus as to which firm you'd like to move forward with, we can ultimately make that decision. Brenda can assist us in making sure that we have it all documented appropriately and go through the proper process to actually assign this contract.
And we would do some reference checking this week to make sure that there weren't any red flags and that everything we were hearing was positive. But if you wanted to authorize a student entering to a contract, either chairman could sign that by the end of the week or I could, depending on whether or not there's consensus and the references checked out, okay?
I don't know about the rest of you guys, but it's, it's fresh. I think, I think it'd be a good thing to make that decision.
Well, do you want to go over what we put for the scores? We need to say that publicly or?
You don't necessarily need to say what your specific scores are publicly, but just.
I scored Renee Narlock significantly higher than Gov HR. That was just my opinion. I think it was, she was more passionate. And I think she did a better bit for our search, especially for what she said, finding the right candidate and community input.
I, I agree with you. I won't say significantly higher, but I did have her ratings higher. And the things that stuck out to me, again, looking at extra charges, the community, she would come out here and do the community survey, if you will, charging any extra for that. Also like the fact she said she would help us establish a review for our county commissioner, which I think that's one of the things I'd like for us to, to have, a good review for our candidates, not just the one we have coming, you have it down the road. You have a good established review for that person. And so, and if you look, I think that she said her average tenure was five years, if I'm not mistaken. And the other ones were 3.5 average tenure. So I, I like that too. On top of all the other answers that she gave, it were really good. So it's my opinion.
If I was the hiring, hiring person, Narlock would get my.
You are the hiring person. That is.
I would hire today. Straight to the point.
I will concur. I believe that she's much more hands-on, understands the nature, the fit, not just from a government standpoint, filling the description of the job description, filling the basics. But she wants to go down and make sure it's a good fit, understands that it, there's a lot of moving parts in a person's life, making this decision, not only from the board's aspect, but from, from a candidate's aspect. And I think finding the right fit for our community is critical. And the fact that she understands that, wants to come down and drill down and give us candidates that we have a hard time deciding because she's done so much in-depth research, I think is testimony to probably her successes. And she's more nimble. I think she's less of a bureaucracy of a business, so she can move quicker and be more responsive. And so my support would go behind her as our selected firm.
Yeah, I think so. I agree with everything that we've said here from the, from the two. I would certainly be in her core. The other group maybe has some, would I say, North Carolina ties, so to speak. But that's not a priority. Priority is our needs, the best candidate, the communication, the involvement. I like those components. And then, as Derek said, some follow-up afterward because we'll need to reevaluate. We'll need to go back and do our due diligence and see how things are progressing based on what the desires of the, not only this board, but the community. So that would be my choice by far.
We have to make this in the form of a motion.
If you'd like to authorize us to go ahead and conduct the references and to enter into a contract, then it would be helpful to have that in the form of a motion.
I'd like to make that a motion if I can.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor to move forward with, is it Renee Narlock and Associates? Any other discussion? Here, none? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? None motion carried.
Thank you. You made some really great points and I think you made a good decision. Well, we'll be working on this this week and be in touch with you as the reference checks are conducted and a contract is offered to her pending a good reference check.
Any other business from this board?
I have nothing else.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, a motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Thank you all. Charlie, get in the opposition.
Really appreciate it.